Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our November 8th Select Board Meeting. We're now out of executive session and are in open session. I'd invite you all to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and we will start with public comment. And per our Select Board policy, public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between citizens and the Select Board. It is a citizen's opportunity to express his or her opinion on issues of town business. The Board may respond to public comment by taking it under consideration when deliberating on an agenda item or referring the item to the administration for appropriate action or response. Public comment shall be for a period of up to 15 minutes, with speakers being allowed three minutes to present their material. Is anybody here for public comment? No? Okay. Then, we will move on to our public hearing for our tax classification, and I'll entertain a motion to open that public hearing.
So moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are in our public hearing, and I will change it over to you to give us a presentation on that.
All right.
Thank you. So, tonight, we typically go over this once a year, but this is our tax classification hearing, and I like to ease into things slowly, just in case nobody has seen this before. And so, I just want to talk a little bit about the steps on how we got here tonight, and what we've done over the past year. And so, the first step in the process would be to determine the property tax levy, which is determined through the budget process. I'm going to go into a little bit of detail than I usually would tonight, just to give a background on that. And then, we determine our assessed valuations throughout the year, and we tabulate all of our properties into classification codes, so I'll talk about that a little bit. And then, we obtain valuation certification from the Department of Revenue. You can see, this was completed on October 27th of '23 this year. The reason that's important is because every year, we always have a question about the assessment timeline, and why we don't, when we send out that bill on January 1st that you're going to get, why is your assessment a year old? Well, this is why. We have to go through a certification process to make sure that is correct, and then that gets done about October, so there's no absolute way we could value every property in town and then the next day, send out the bill. So that's why we're always one year behind the market. And then, we obtain certification of new growth. That's all new construction or newly taxed items in the town. That is also classified by the Department of Revenue. And then, we present those classification options at the Select Board meeting, which is why we're here tonight. After we get through tonight, tomorrow, we'll send all of our certifications into the Department of Revenue for tax rate approval, depending upon the shift you might choose tonight or other options that are available to you. So, I just want to talk a little bit about the valuations and what's happened over the previous year. We went through what's called our quinquennial, one of Melissa's favorite words, this year. And what that means is, we go through a recertification every five years, so quinquennial means every five years. And what that does is, it brings us into an audit by the Department of Revenue, and it ensures that we're operating at the highest standards possible for valuing property in town. And the good news is, we have complied with those standards, and we have passed through that certification process this year. After the dust settles, this is where we ended up with our sectors in the market this year. And you can see that, if you look at the column all the way to your right, is the highlighted column, the percentage of change in those valuations in those sectors. And the classification codes are all the way to the left column. So you can see that the single-family market is still increasing about 15% this past year. And there's been a lot of talk about that, because people feel like we're in a bit of a lull, or we might have property going down. It's just not the case. It's still, we're seeing that now, and then we're also seeing that in the beginning of next year as well. So, values are still holding their own or increasing. Condominium market, pretty much all sectors throughout the classification has gone up. The industrial, personal property values, you can see that, these are all the personal property equipment owned by companies or businesses throughout the town, and some of the valuation changes on that. But overall, the bottom line, you can see there in bold, is our total value of our town has increased about 14.5% from last year to this year. And so, what does that mean as far as the percentage of values by class? Our community is made up of about 84% residential properties. And that's important to note, because when we talk about the levy or the tax burden, because we're 84% residential, that's the class that's going to bear the burden of the levy. And you can see that the personal property, industrial, and commercial are very small pieces of the entire pie that makes up the total value of the town. So I did put a snapshot in here of the fiscal year '23 last year, was just over $7 billion in value, and this year, we're at just over $8 billion. So, just a little bit of an increase, about just over $1 billion in value overall. And then, we want to talk about the levy. We talked about the budget process, but I don't think a lot of people understand what happens here at this process. And so, what we look at is the total town budget, or the property tax levy. That's the revenue a community can raise through real and personal property taxes. In Massachusetts, municipal revenues support local spending, schools, public safety, other public services. They're all raised through a property tax levy. What they don't know is how that levy is broken up. So, there's a little table here. In the total operation of the town, to fund it, is about $144 million. And how do we make up that $144 million? About 15.1 million was made up of state aid, and then we have about 11.9 million of that is from local receipts. Now, that's from like motor vehicle excise tax, fines, et cetera. And then, enterprise funds. Those are our water and sewer funds that come in. And then, other revenue, including free cash. So that's the free cash certification we might get at the end of the year, as well as any town meeting appropriations that we make, from either the overlay account or other fund sources. And then finally, we have our community preservation funds, or our CPA. And it's important to note that that is a Community Preservation Act and not a Certified Public Accountant. I've had people in my office said, "Mr. Mitchell, why do we pay you so much money if we have to hire a CPA to come in and do your job for you?" Well, that's not the case. We have a Community Preservation Act, and those funds go to the beautification or safety of our town, and that's what those funds are used for. So, thus, it makes up about 66% of that is the property tax levy. That's the largest part of the revenue that we see from all of our town revenues. And so, if we talk a little bit about the levy, or Proposition 2.5, this is also a misunderstanding a lot of times, that people think their property tax can't go up by more than 2.5%. We talk about that every year. Really, what Proposition 2.5 means is that we have two things. We have a levy limit, and then we have a levy ceiling. So let's talk about the levy limit for a second. That typically is, if you look at the right-hand side of your screen, the way that's developed is we start up top, and the base is last year's levy limit, what we could have raised. And that's that $92 million that you see up there. And then, we add 2.5% of that, plus any new growth or new construction that we have added. And those are the actual numbers that you see there on the screen. So that brings us up to our fiscal '24 levy limit of about $96,521,525. What we can add to that is debt exclusion, because debt exclusion is a temporary funding source for any capital improvements that are only on the books for the term of that loan, and then they come off. And that's what you're seeing here, is we take that $96,521, and we add our debt that we're paying out this year, and it brings us to a maximum allowable levy of just under $97 million. Now, the total levy, or the maximum levy ceiling, what that means is it's 2.5% of our entire property value. And so, simply put, if we took the total value of the town, and we charged a rate of $25 per thousand for our tax rate, the maximum allowable levy for the town of North Andover is this figure right here, that's $200,911,000. Now, you can only get there with a proposition override or other funding sources, so that's important to note. We're far from that number. I don't think we want to see us go there tonight, but...
Or tomorrow.
Or tomorrow, yes. So then, what we do is, we can take this down in the lower left-hand part of your screen, you'll see this $96 million there is our maximum allowable levy. The actual amount we're going to raise is this $95,021,572. And so, we take the difference between the two, and we're basically leaving about $1.7 or $1.8 million on the table. That's our excess levy capacity.
So what does that mean? So what does that mean to the taxpayer?
The tax, what that means is, we could have raised $96,796, but the town budget, state aid coming in, these numbers coming in, we've actually saved $1.7 million.
So we're taking $1.7 million off the taxpayer?
Right.
A lot of that is because of Amazon, right? So because of the Amazon TIF, we held money back, because it was a one-time revenue source.
Right. So, let's bring everything together. So we talked a little bit about the tax levy, and so when we talk about the budget process, the table on your upper left-hand corner there, we take the $144 million, and we subtract out all of those other sources we talked about. That leaves us with that $95 million dollar figure, and that's what we have to raise to fund the town. And then, everybody is always concerned about what is the tax rate. Well, the tax rate, in this case, to determine if a community is affordable or not, really doesn't tell you a whole lot, because the tax rate sets itself. When you look at this, you look at the table on the right-hand side, basically, what we're doing is, we're taking all of the values after it's been set, and dividing it into the total budget, and you are left with a tax rate. So if we were at a single rate, tonight's rate would be $11.82. So it's very simple math. If you were to vote a residential factor of one, basically, we'd have an $11.82 tax So, let's look at this. So if we did do that, a single tax rate, we're at $11.82, it shows the percentage of the levy that each particular portion of the town would be responsible for. So the residential class would make up just over $70, just under $75 million of that levy. Now, if we were to shift to a full maximum 1.5%, what we'd see is, the levy for the residential class would go down to about $72.1 million, or 76% of the levy, where on the previous screen, it was about seven, almost 79%.
With regards to the rate and the value of the town, the value of the town, if I'm understanding correctly, is almost irrelevant if you're not near your levy ceiling, correct? Because like you said, the rate sets itself?
Right, exactly.
Because if the value was $500 million less, taxpayers would still be paying the same amount of gross dollars, but at different rate.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep, that is absolutely correct.
It's really the budget that sets the taxes.
Yeah, and there's a lot of towns out West who are very worried when the market was declining, as that value went down, but the budgets weren't decreasing, that tax rate was creeping up closer to that $20 to $25 mark, and so they were very afraid of hitting their levy ceiling.
Got it, okay. Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's fine. So you can see how that would work. There's some shifts there. So let's look at the overall shifts, and we can shift anywhere from a residential factor of one, which is at the top of the screen, and the corresponding rates are over in the right-hand column. And then, as we go down in the residential factor, you can see what happens to the rates. And so typically, we are right in the frame of about a 1.32 CIP, or what we call a residential factor of about .93 or 94. And so what I've done is, this is where we stand as of today, fiscal '23, we were at a 1.32 shift. And so that's this right here. And so, if we stayed the same, you can see what happens with those tax rates. Right now, we're at a $12.24 tax rate for fiscal '23. You can see, if we stayed exactly the same, the residential rate would go down to $11.10. And the corresponding CIP rate was at $17.25, that would go down to $15.61. So you can see what a difference the valuation increases make up on the tax rate.
It doesn't mean your tax bill's going down.
It does not mean...
Call it to that trap one minute.
And I don't feel that actually...
Trying to spread good news.
Your properties are all worth more.
Just hoping you missed that. So, let's talk about the valuation trends for a second. This is what we've seen over the past four years, and we've seen a tax rate declining. And that's the reason being, is the valuation of the towns have been going up. So you can see that definitely over the past four years here. It's certainly going up, and then the corresponding tax rate goes down. The overall average industrial value is just over, just under $2.9 million. So just to put that in perspective, the lower right-hand corner of your screen, the Amazon valuation is $407 million. So that's what kind of impact it has on the tax burden and the valuation of that sector. Historical tax rates, you can see over the past four years, as the value has gone up, you can see what has happened with the tax rate there over the past four years. It has slightly gone down, and that's just reflective of the values going up, and the budget slightly increasing.
Is Amazon impactful at all at this point?
It is.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a big factor this year.
The TIF will go on effect this year too.
Right.
So it's still one, we still need to think.
You still need to remember that, yeah.
Yeah, we've got to be very careful. This next slide kind of shows you why. So, the, two years ago, before Amazon was on the books, the residential class made up about 83% of the levy, well, that was the share. Amazon comes aboard, with that $407 million in valuation, it has reduced the residential class to about 78% of the levy. So it's quite a bet, when you think about it. And then correspondingly, when you look at the commercial-industrial, you can see, they were at about 16.7%. Now, they're making up about 21% of the share.
Without the TIF in consideration?
That's correct. The TIF is not enacted yet. It could only be enacted after the certificate of occupancy was obtained. And so, we know that's going to happen next year, which means that...
Next fiscal year.
Correct, fiscal '25.
Well, that will be the first year that it will be in effect. Yeah. And then, so what, yeah, so what you'll see is, 80% of the value basically drop off out of the CIP at that point.
Exactly. So, that will certainly impact the pieces of the pie again. So right now, this is the reflective of what's going to happen with the tax bills. If we stay the course, which is highlighted in red there, we can see that the residential, typical residential home will go up about $375 in taxes. The commercial, this is a little bit misleading, the $399 decrease, and that's again, because they're part of the CIP class, or the Amazon is making up a big portion of that industry. And the values have not increased as much as the residential. If you look back on those percentage of differences, you'll see the commercial probably went up about 3%, where residential's going up 15% or 16%. So that's reflective of those values as well. And then, the industrial class, they're going up about $700. And so, you can see, as you look at these columns, if you follow the residential tax bill, right here, this is what we do, as we change this shift up here, this is what's happening. And so, let's go over a couple of those, just so you can see the changes here. If we were to go to a single rate, you can see the increase in the average tax bill of a single family, about $950. But then, as we go down towards the other way, you can see that the tax bill starts to decline. But what's important is, when you remember, we talked about the piece of the pie, we saw that the CIP was only a very small piece, and that's reflective right here in this last column. If you were to shift to the maximum, you'd increase the commercial property tax bill by $1,400, but you'd still see the residential class increase by $48. And that's because that CIP class is so small, you're shifting such a large burden to take a small burden off of the residential class. So this is an example of the vote you would take tonight, if you wanted to stay put. And then, the other exemptions that are, or options that are available to us tonight would be the residential exemption, the small commercial exemption, or the open space exemption. Those historically haven't been adopted by the town. I didn't feel it important to put it into the presentation, but if you want me to go over any of the residential exemption or other ones, then I can do that as well. Any questions?
So you talked about, if we stayed the 1.32, the current commercial rate, the average commercial rate would go down by $400. But you said that's somewhat misleading?
Yes, exactly, because when you talk about the commercial-industrial, personal property sector, it's a very small one, and now, Amazon is in that sector. So it's artificially, you know, decreasing that bill, because they're still part of that.
Okay. So for the typical commercial property owner, taxes should go up?
Yes, in fact, we had a lot of calls. We sent out letters this year to, for anyone that went up over 22%, which was about 300 letters that we sent out. We had a lot of respondents, a lot of commercial, industrial, and personal property people, mostly commercial classes. I know that they, they're hurting still. You know, we have a lot of office-based condominiums in town, quite a few, and they're really declining in value. We've seen a lot of office buildings. It used to be the M&amp;T Bank, talked to that owner. They're losing about 40% of their tenants, unfortunately. So office space has just taken such a big hit. And then, the mom-and-pop shops, you know, we're seeing them still struggle from results of COVID, get back on their feet, and the price of goods and inflation is really hampering them as well. So they're having a tough time, we heard from a lot of them this year, and it's unfortunate, so...
Which bank did you say? I didn't...
Was it M&amp;T Bank back in the day? I think it was over on the, on the North Andover Lawrence Line there.
Okay, yeah, no, People's Bank.
People's, yeah, sorry, that's where it is, yeah. I think it was M&amp;T years and years ago.
Lawrence Savings, I believe.
Yes, exactly. Yes, that funky, that funky building, yeah.
So with those high vacancies, are you seeing an increase in abatement requests? And how does that factor into any of this?
Yeah, that's a good, that's a really good question. So, what happens with any of the commercial or industrial properties that see a large increase in their taxes? They have tax consultants that will file abatements or appeals with our office. When I first got here, three years ago, we had one. Now, we have nine appellate tax board cases. So we certainly see a large increase in those, and that's after we've either gone through and settled 15 or 20 of them, or granted abatements or denied them due to other instances. So we still have nine cases that we have to hear, so it takes up a lot of our time in the office to do that as well, yeah.
And when an abatement comes through, what then happened, let's say an abatement or appellate is successful, what then happens to the levy?
Yeah, so we have what's called an overlay account, and that is essentially funded for us for any of those instances that might come through. So if someone wins their case at the appellate tax board, and it comes out of that overlay account, and it does not affect the general fund, it's already been raised and appropriated.
This is kind of going back a few slides, but there's a lot of conversation about the extra levy capacity, and why that 1.7 million would be left. Why aren't we capturing that 1.7?
We've got to be careful, because if we raise that levy now, you think about Amazon right now, their tax bill makes up about $4.7 million. So if you were to raise to that limit now, and Amazon comes off the table, you're stuck up there. You can't, you can't just decrease your budget. And then what happens is, the average single-family residential parcel, they'll see an increase of over $1,200 the following year.
When the TIF goes into effect.
Right, when the TIF goes into effect, 80% of that Amazon value comes off the book, well, then the burden is spread.
Or you're forced to make cuts.
Yeah, yeah, so it's...
Stocks in front of town hall.
Yeah, they'll...
And I appreciate that. I just, there's a lot of conversation amongst residents about why, like, is that money that we're not using, is it not money? You know, like, that there's things that need to be, so I just wanted to...
No, that's a great, it's a great question.
Money we're not raising.
We're not raising, they say, why aren't we raising that?
We don't have it, we just have to...
We really don't have, yeah.
Right, yeah.
We don't have it.
Because we don't want it to swing back to be a burden on the resident.
That's right, and so, you know, it kind of masks, you know, what might happen. And I think we'll see that next year. You know, you might even be considering a larger shift because of that huge decrease in value in that sector. It's going to be more of a burden on the residential class, and then at that point, you know, we don't know where we're going to end up. I mean, we're raising the budget, you know, close to $5 million each year as well, and that's an impact. So, as we see that increase in the budget, and then Amazon come off, you know, we've got to be very careful not to put that burden on the residents.
Yeah, is that levy capacity today solely as a result of Amazon, or is it...
No, it's also all the other new growth that we've had in town. But we've been very careful to use the new growth from Amazon for one-time revenue, and use it to do capital, or save it in the capital stabilization account, so that we use for Facilities Master Plan 2, so that we wouldn't have a situation where we have a recurring cost that Amazon is paying for, and then suddenly, Amazon's no longer paying as much. And remember, the TIF lasts 10 years. So we'll start to see this money fold back in every two years, right? It's 80, and then 60. But that money has now all been kind of appropriated or saved for the implementation of Facilities Master Plan 2.
Yeah, and the good news is, is as that project unfolds, you know, a lot of that debt is already accounted for, so we're not going to see, you know, additional debt exclusions or Proposition 2.5 overrides. We've been very smart to put that money aside ahead of time to fund that debt.
Absolutely. Thank you. Anybody else have any other questions or comments? No? Thank you so much for your time.
Absolutely.
The presentation is excellent, as always, because it's not an easy thing to follow.
It's a little bit different.
Oh, it's very good presentation, very descriptive.
It's very helpful.
I want everyone at home to watch it.
Do we want to have Bill stay here? Will we see if there's any comments from the public, just in case he's going to, he needed to answer them?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Do we have any public comment for the public hearing on the tax shift? No? Nobody wants to talk about it? Okay. All right, then I will take a motion to close our public hearing.
So moved?
Second.
Motion on the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill, nice job.
So we're out of our public hearing, and I will take a motion to vote on the percentage of the tax levy.
So Madam Chair, I move the North Andover Board of Selectmen votes in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, as amended, the percentage of local tax levy which will be borne by each class of real and personal property relative to setting the fiscal 2024 tax rates, and sets the residential factor at .03, I'm sorry, .9388, or other fact, I'm sorry, .9388, with a corresponding CPI shift of 1.9388. Point nine three eight eight, with a corresponding CPI shift of one point three two zero one four, pending certification of the town's annual tax recap by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue.
I have a motion. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we have a tax, we have a tax shift. That was a long.
This is our Board of Assessors, who, and Michelle, who are our new assistant assistants.
Thank you all for coming tonight.
Nice job.
For waiting.
What bill is that? Madam Chair, is there any chance we would take Mr. Coco's item out of order so that he can?
He stole my idea. Yes, I will take item, I'm going to take item H out of order. Mr. Coco, if you'd like to come up and talk to us about the Santa Parade?
He's I, the tree lighting. I guess he could do both, H and I, why not? Right?
H and I. You can talk about both, H and I.
Good evening. Jeff Coco, six ninety-five A Johnson Street, co-chair of the Festival Committee, here to ask for permission to hold our annual Santa Parade and tree lighting on the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth of November. Anybody have any questions to this annual event? Most of you are out there with me. I don't have to really elaborate too much. I don't know if there are any questions.
The parade road hasn't changed at all?
No, but I'm glad you mentioned that, especially from the select board's perspective. It really is not going to affect you, but the construction at the middle school is changing our staging route a little bit this year. You are usually in section one. You will still be in section one. Two usually wraps around the backside. That's the one that I handle. And then three goes around the cafeteria one twenty-five side of the school. And four, five, and six, if there are six, are over at Kittredge. That's where Santa usually is staged, and the high school band, et cetera. I think this year, what we may do, we still have to do a walkthrough on it, but I think we may start up towards the Atkinson School, come down the hill, past the early childhood, then swing to the left around the backside of the school and go around that way to the front. The only issue that we have, I think the boosters is having their basketball game that day that they traditionally have. There has been some communication between the police department and the boosters, and they're going to barricade off that area so they can have the Park, Park Street side, the Park Street side of the parking lot there, and come in and out of there, the gate will be open. But I'm sure we're still going to have cars that are going to be coming in there, dropping off kids in front, et cetera. They'll be the only fly in the ointment, so to speak, from the parade standpoint, but otherwise, I think it should be relatively easy to handle. And the tree lighting is going to be a traditional thing that we're normally doing. As you all know, most of you have been there many times. And hopefully, we'll have good weather.
A little bit of snow is always.
Oh, no, that's, hey, remember that year? We lit the tree and it started to snow.
That was the best.
It was perfect.
Any new participants for the parade this year?
I wouldn't say necessarily new participants, but we have noticed, and I'm getting calls today as a matter of fact, that a lot of participants we haven't had pre-COVID are now starting to come back. We had a couple of dance schools who were coming in, but they had to back out because of other competitions that they're having on the same day, but we've had others come in that haven't been with us since the, since eighteen. So it's, it looks pretty good. Hopefully, it'll be a decent event.
And the tree lighting will have the typical cookies and?
Yes, cookies and hot chocolate. Run into a little question with the health department this year because we have a new health inspector. And they were questioning, they wanted our vendors to, food vendors, we don't have food vendors. Stop and Shop is gracious enough to donate, as you all know. Donate the cookies and Perfecto's, Stick Nose, gives us the hot chocolate, so we're, you know, we're in relatively good hands there, so hopefully, there won't be any other issue with that.
What about breakfast with Santa?
Breakfast with Santa. I believe we are doing that here at the old senior center. We talked about doing it at the new senior center, but the only issue, and I understand they're currently working over there, Melissa, doing some electrical work. The only issue we have in the kitchen over there, it's a beautiful kitchen, wonderful, wonderful facility. As many of you know, during our last crisis that we had, we used it as a shelter, and it was really fabulous setup they had there. The, the only current issue that we have is there are no receptacles in the kitchen at all. So it makes it very difficult to plug anything in. Yeah. In fact, we, we set up a microwave so people could warm calzones and pizzas, but we had to run it through the pass-through and plug it into a janitor's, no, it's a shoe stain, plug it into a receptacle underneath there, because there are absolutely no receptacles, which makes our task from the breakfast type of thing a little more difficult. Once that's all resolved, it'll make it a little bit easier. The other issue that we're having is access to the facility. I have keys to the old senior center, so it makes it easy for us to get in and out. Now I need a fob to get into the new senior center, because we're there off-hours and et cetera, et cetera. So a lot of, a lot of little issues that we have to iron out initially. But it's just as well, our only concern was that the facility was being used for storage for the High Street property. But all of that's out of there now, so shouldn't be an issue with the old senior center.
So what, what date it will be, will it be, and it is the new senior center?
No, the old senior center. It's going to be right, right over here. And I believe it's going to be the following, is that the second or the third? The Sunday? We haven't decided yet because of the Red Bow, which you're voting on tonight as well. I think that's on the second, so we may do ours on the third. Next committee meeting, we should be deciding that, which will be this Tuesday as to. So it's going to be the second or the third of the following week, so.
The reason that I'm asking is because of where to put the wreaths.
Yeah.
And we were thinking in a portion of the old, I haven't talked to Melissa about it yet, but trying to figure it all out.
Okay, we'll figure it out.
We'll figure it out.
And I understand our town manager told me that the contract was signed for the tree lighting company to come in and take care of all of that. Hopefully, that will all be done well. I would like to have a chat with them before they do it. They assured me last time that they were going to blow our socks off with their, with their tree lighting. I found it to be adequate, but it wasn't super impressive.
You still had your socks on?
I said, my socks are still on, so I'd like to see if they can do a little bit better job with certain things. There was some miscommunication between the actual installation crews and the people that we spoke with about what should be done, but hopefully, we'll clarify all of that and get all that squared away. We want it to look nice for the town.
It's not that far off.
No, exactly. Soon as I see that lift out there, I'll be out there. They did an excellent job on the surrounding trees, I think. I think we can agree on that. Just to let's see a little more emphasis put into our main tree.
I think last year our lights were damaged.
Yes, that's right.
The other issue was that part of their contract was to remove all the pre-existing lights that were on the tree. And gentleman who was there doing it said, oh, you know, we're going to have to charge you more for this because it's not part of our normal job. I said, maybe you better review your contract. We did agree that you had to take those off. They still didn't really fully remove all of them, to be honest with you, so it's another issue I want to bring up with them. But I mean, all the small things, I shouldn't even be griping and telling you all the stuff, but just bringing you up to speed.
Thank you. All right, everything sounds great. I'll take a motion on item H.
Madam Chair, I move the Select Board to approve the request of the Festival Committee to use Main, Elm, and Water Streets on Saturday, November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three, from ten AM to two PM for the annual Santa Parade.
A second?
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and then I will take a motion on item I.
Madam Chair, I move the Select Board to approve the request of the Festival Committee to use the town common for the tree lighting on November twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three, from ten AM to eight PM. So long for the lighting.
Only, only because of the setup.
A second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Looking forward to it.
Yeah, I know, really. Janice was out there at ten saying, where is everybody? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, so we'll move back to item B, and we have a request from Keith Connors of the North Parish Unitarian Universalist Church to use that little piece of land for their annual Red Bow Fair. They are not here today, but it was, they did it last year, and it was, everything went well.
Madam Chair, I would move approval.
A second?
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Remember which piece of land it is? It's kind of, it's just the left.
Facing the doors to the left.
Okay, got it. Right. That's a thought.
We'd like to put a tent there so that our greens are outside.
Yep.
It's a nice fair.
Yeah.
For those of you who haven't been, go. You will really like it.
Is it a craft, more of a craft fair?
Kind of everything. There's raffles, there's crafts, there's new goods that they sell. It's really a nice artwork. It's been there in the past. They have a children's area. Used like toys and stuff like that. No, it's, it's really a nice little event.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we look forward to the Red Bow Fair. We'll move on to the application for the Keno license for China Blossom.
This is a new license. This license does not exist now. It's not a replacement, like what we usually say. This would be a new Keno license.
Madam Chair, I have to move approval.
I have a motion.
A second?
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm surprised they don't have one already.
I know, I'm shocked.
Item D for ARPA funding for the installation of security cameras. It looks like it's an ad.
Yep, so this is an ARPA request, and I still, it sounds so bad with my Boston accent. This is an ARPA request, goodness, from the police department, and it is for security cameras in the amount of ninety thousand dollars. We actually, they had put in a lower request, and we had returned it back to them and asked them to increase it to account for a camera for the parking lot. So if you look at the application, this is for five cameras plus the ones, the one in the parking lot is now at it. So it's Main Street at Route one twenty-five, it's Main Street at Sutton Street, Sutton Street at Route one twenty-five, Mass Ave at Osgood Street, and Route one twenty-five at Route one fourteen. And these cameras will work along with the cameras that we currently have in a lot of our school buildings and be on a server at the police station. And basically, what happens is the video is recorded, and if we have like a public safety incident, it is then reviewed in order to help us with the perpetration of crimes. And so we often work with some of our surrounding communities when we have a crime in the area. For instance, if there's a, a bank robbery and the person drove maybe in the direction of Lawrence, we'll work with the Lawrence Police because they have a lot of cameras that are but North Andover. This will allow us to, to have more access.
So we're having a camera out back, is there one going to?
Well, back and out front. Yeah. Out front was already included, and we said, you know what, let's do out back too. So they added out back to the request.
Is this a precursor to traffic cameras?
No. I don't think there would be any interest for traffic cameras in this community. I would see this more as a precursor to eventually body cams, which I think will probably be required statewide soon enough. But what this really is, is not so much for catching people who are running a red light, right? Like you would see with the traffic camera.
Which isn't legal in Massachusetts right now, right?
Right. This is really more to aid us in safety.
So why were these specific locations chosen? Is this just a place where we see or expect a higher crime?
No, it's not that we expect a higher crime right there, but this is a way that would be convenient to perhaps flee our
High traffic.
High traffic, flee our town to get to, yeah. Yep.
So the way they operate, so they'll, they'll be on twenty-four seven, and then what would trigger a review of any videotape?
A complaint.
Just a complaint?
Yeah. So if you go into the nine-one-one center now, you can see that the high school, the middle school, right? They're all up and showing, but we don't review them unless something happens and we have to go back and, and take a look. The camp, the airport has cameras that are at the police station as well. If you haven't been on a tour of nine-one-one, I'm happy to take you. I mean, it's very impressive, their camera system, and this would work with all of that. At the police station. Yeah.
Like if someone's car gets stolen?
Yes, they'd be able to go along.
Review all of the exits from the town area to see if the car left the town.
Could a complaint be, I see people running red lights a lot?
I mean, it could, and then we would, we wouldn't use these cameras to catch someone running red lights. We would then put our traffic unit there. Right? But this is really more about, you know, is a major crime, a bank robbery, that kind of thing, and they're using these cameras to assist in.
I'll take a motion.
I'll move that the Select Board approve funding from ARPA in the amount of ninety thousand dollars for installation of security cameras.
A second there.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All right. Security cameras we have. Winter snow emergency.
All right, this is the same policy as last year and that we've done the last couple of years. So, so on December first, if the police chief, working with the Director of Public Works, decides that there is a snow emergency event, that would be declared. We do do a robocall, put it everywhere, basically. And we do not allow during that time period of person to park or permit any vehicle to remain unattended on any street or way in the town of North Andover. And then we do have a list of streets where there is parking allowed, usually on the even or odd side only. And we do allow cars to come into the municipal lots for no more than forty-eight hours. So this is kind of what we've been doing the last few years. It has, I think, worked really well. We've gotten very positive feedback from businesses, especially in the Main Street area, because what was happening, if you remember, is all winter long, no one could park on Main Street, which made it very difficult, right? So now, we know there's going to be snow, we put the policy in effect, it allows us to plow to the curb, which, which really makes it easier for public travel.
I think it's great, and I do think people do appreciate it's, it's a robocall, and then they can make the proper changes. But, because especially in the downtown area, we, we have some places with no parking.
Yeah, a lot of people in this area don't have a driveway, or they have a small driveway, right? So to be prohibit parking for the entire winter is really kind of silly, right?
I think this is good. This has worked out well.
No.
As opposed to the prior one, it was a blanket.
I believe you, so you put that unattended on any street or way in North Andover. I mean, some people do park a vehicle or even a business vehicle, and it could stay there for a very long time.
So if you have, if there's somebody who you, if you, if you believe that a car has been abandoned, you should call. Because a lot of the time, what will happen is, we'll find out it actually has not been abandoned, but so-and-so's in the hospital, or so what we do when we get an abandoned call, abandoned car call, is we actually go out to the address and knock on the door, make sure things are okay. And it actually happens a lot. It does. Once in a while, it will turn out to be a stolen car, right? So if you ever have a car in your street that you think is abandoned, suspicious, always feel free to call the business line and let us know. But because we do allow parking in the municipal lots, and we do allow parking on some streets, particularly ones where really it is prohibitive, I think this works pretty well. But it is a good way sometimes for us to find out that a car has been abandoned for a long period of time. Because we'll tell it.
With that, I'll take a motion.
I'll move that the Select Board approve the winter snow emergency as presented.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Move on to the fiscal twenty-five budget policy statement.
I think this is our budget, annual budget policy. Basically, what we do is we take your goals and turn them into our budgetary goals for the year. We use this document to help us create the budget as a policy document. And since we're getting into budget season, now is the time for us to go ahead and get it ratified.
Melissa, I had a quick question. And this may be not a pro of anything. What caused the massive drop in OPEB from twenty-one to twenty-two?
It's literally just the market.
Really?
I get very excited and celebrate it because I'm like, we have forty million dollars less liability! And Lynn's like, it's the market. I'm like, aw. So it's really just the market going up and down.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was excited.
It feels good though, right? To see it. I get excited too.
We know a lot less money.
Yeah, but it's, I mean, it really is. It's just the market going up and down, interest rates.
Any other questions or comments? Kind of puts all our goals and stuff.
Into financial.
It's a nice summary.
Anything you want to highlight in it, or?
You know, I don't think so. One of the things that we kind of noted in our, I think, differently than before is we spent a lot of time before talking about, in the budget policy statement, coming out of COVID and how we were going to recover. And I think we all feel like we're not really seeing that anymore, right? We're, we've kind of stabilized. So now we've kind of focused on planning as we are leaving this growth period back to normalcy, so. Interesting.
All right, I'll take a motion.
I'll move the Select Board to adopt the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five budget policy statements.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in, all those in favor?
Aye.
Item G is the rate of first refusal for an affordable unit, which we usually take.
We waive our rate of first refusal for an affordable unit at one Harvest Drive, Unit one zero nine.
A second?
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So we'll move on to appointments, these are the last, this is the last group that Dick and I did. Do you want to?
Sure, Madam Chair, I will, so just some words, I mean, so you'll look at this and you'll see a lot of very familiar names out there. Officer Wilson will be joining the festival, festival committee. Chief Dolan, our retired fire chief, will be joining the patriotic observance committee, also a veteran. Dr. Devlin, who was a, is a retired dentist who practiced here in town, will be joining our historical commission. Amy Mabley, who is a former member of the school committee, will be joining the master plan implementation committee. Maureen Crawford-Hence will be joining the recreation and youth council. And Kayla Robart will be joining the festival committee as well, so a good, really good group of candidates. So with that, I will make a motion. Listen, we have any, we'll start with questions later, but I'll make a motion to, I'm going to motion them all together with, with their respective end dates, term end dates. So I'll motion Mark Wilson be appointed to the festival committee with a term ending date of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. I will motion that William Dolan is appointed to the patriotic observance committee with a term ending date of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. I'll motion that Peter Devlin is appointed to the historical commission with an end date of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. That Amy Mabley is appointed to the master plan implementation committee with a term ending date of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. And that Maureen Crawford-Hence is appointed to the youth and recreation council with a term end date of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. And finally, that Kayla Robart is appointed to the festival committee with a term ending date of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
All of those.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you to everyone who does volunteer and goes through the interview process, and we appreciate everybody that does that.
More to follow.
It's a lot of work, yeah, yep, and we couldn't do it without them. All right, we're on to licensing, so I'll take a motion to open licensing.
Madam Chair, move the select board acting as licensed commissioners open the meeting of the licensing commission.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
We are now in.
We have a, an application here from Toasted Brothers North Andover LLC for a change of manager. We've reviewed, everything seems to be in order here. The applicant is not in attendance, right, because of our meeting date change, as I understand it. But this one seems to be pretty straightforward, you guys are breaking me in easy, so.
Just don't drop your papers on the way in. That could be a disaster.
I don't get to give, I don't get to give the talk about, you know, treating, you know, ID check seriously.
Behave yourself, stay college town.
Right. All right, so unless there's any questions from anybody, I'll, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make, I'll move that the select board acting as licensing commissioners approve the application from Toasted Brothers North Andover LLC, DBA the Friendly Toast for a change of manager as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will move the select board acting as licensed commissioners close the meeting of the licensing commission.
I'll make that motion.
Oh, you'll make that motion, oh, I can't make that one just yet.
You can't make that, I was going to say, wait a minute, you can't do that.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion to close, we have a second, so please take this gavel back. All those in favor?
See how much fire it is.
All the favor, aye. We are out of licensing, sorry about that.
Be sure you don't want the gavel.
I'm quite certain.
All right, we'll move on to our consent items. We are accepting a donation to the fire department from Smart Start for a hundred and fifty dollars, a grant to the police department in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, almost forty thousand, from the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration for the municipal road safety program, and a grant in the amount of one point two four million dollars from Mass Works Infrastructure Program for improvements at Route one twenty-five and Great Pond Road, which will be fabulous.
Now who was responsible for writing those?
I just did my, we got a grant dance, which you all missed. Andrew, Jim and John worked really hard on this Mass Work grant and, yeah.
That's a big grant.
It's amazing, yep, and Chief Gray and his lieutenant team did the highway one, so it's great.
That's a lot of money.
It's very exciting.
The, the safety improvements to that intersection will be.
Huge, yeah, so the design is being done by ARPA. And now we'll roll right into the work, yep, so.
So I'll move that the select board accept all consent items.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further comments or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you to everybody for all your hard work on those and for the donation to the fire department. And we will move on to approval of minutes, we've got October tenth, thirteenth and sixteenth. Has everybody had a chance to review them?
Have. The October thirteenth one noted no public comment, but I thought there was, and I was remote, so I don't recall, but.
I don't believe there was.
That was the Friday?
Yeah.
I believe Mr. DeSalvo.
DeSalvo was, yeah, Mark, Mark was here.
I didn't know Mark saying anything.
He actually, you were in.
I was remote, yeah.
Mark was here, he was here.
Yeah, I don't know that, I don't know that it matters, but.
He did say something because there was a hug that followed him.
Okay, so let's not approve those, yeah, take them off.
The sixteenth has a double nomination for when we were reorganizing. I think it was, might be, I think Rosemary York, vice chair twice.
Oh, there you go.
Congratulations.
Want any chance?
But that's minor, it doesn't have to.
Madam Chair, I will move approval of the minutes from ten-ten twenty-three and ten-sixteen twenty-three with the correction that was noted that there was a double entry for the, for the vice chair.
I have a motion.
I'll second the approval of ten-ten and ten-sixteen.
I need to abstain from ten-ten, nothing present.
Do we need to do them separate?
I can abstain.
Abstain. I have a motion and a second, any further comments? All those in favor? Aye. All right, any select board updates?
No, 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 no.
Veterans Day.
Veterans Day, yeah.
Thank you for your service.
Yes.
Hope to see everybody coming out on Saturday to honor our veterans for the parade and then the ceremony to follow at the Memorial Field. You know, at ten AM.
Parade starts at ten, first in Maine.
Thank you to all our veterans.
Yes, I'll tell you, when you attend the, the Veterans Day parade and the presentation and the speeches, it's really, every year is a moving event. Just, it's often the first time I put my winter coat on, so keep that in mind. I think in all the years I've been doing this, it's almost probably maybe two times I can wear a winter coat, so just keep that in mind because it can get a little cool.
Was it last, last year it was warm?
Yeah.
I remember one year we had it inside, too.
Yeah, we had a rain one.
I just wanted to remark that since the, we had the memorial at Gallagher Field, just want to say, you know, thank you to Dick for your words and that was a really, that was a great morning, great day.
That was very well attended, I was, thank you everybody for being there, it was, it was all nice for you all to show up. It was, you know, the town was very well represented at that meet, at that event, so yes, thank you all.
I thought it was so nice to hear the history of the naming, because you don't always know, and it was such a moving.
Well, there's a lot of people that, that knew him as well, so.
I think that's something we need to keep alive, you know, people often go to Applin and they don't know why it was named Applin. Or they go to Thompson, they don't know why it was named Thompson, so. So it's good to keep that alive, I know that the Thompson School does a good job of remembering my prime Thompson and everything, so.
The Thompson family still lives in town, of a different last name because of my sister.
And Joe Walsh Stadium and why all of these things have their names.
Why they're all, yeah, to keep the history alive, absolutely.
So thank you.
Town manager updates?
Yeah, so just two quick congratulations are due. We had Jillian Kemp from our veteran services department got the Greg Hill Chick-fil-A Community Hero Award today. So we were very proud of her. Me and Laura got to take a picture with the cow, so that was a highlight of the day today, but we were very happy for her. Dee had a missus because she was in a meeting, so she didn't get a picture with the cow, but we were very, very happy for her. It is well deserved, there's such nice things to say about her, all which are true. And tomorrow, the Noah Shore Chamber is recognizing Jill LeBlanc, and he's receiving award. So it's, it's an exciting time for our veterans division, and it's nice to see them get the recognition they deserve because they do an amazing job. A lot of veterans came out today to see Jillian, which was really nice, and we were really appreciative to see that.
She does such good work.
She does, yes.
There was a donation made in her name too, right?
There was, to the Ironstone Farm, yeah, so, and the work that they do with veterans is just pretty amazing, so we were really, really happy for her. And then we have two items on the agenda, the first one is the twenty-twenty-four annual election calendar. This, and Dawn will tell you, is a busy, busy year, so we do have four elections this year, which is pretty incredible if you think about it, especially because most of them will also have early voting. So our election staff is going to be really working hard and appreciated this year. So as a reminder, the last day to obtain nomination papers for the annual town election will be on February second. The last day to submit them will be on February sixth, and our annual town election is on Tuesday, March twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four. And then the second item is just the select board meeting calendar for January through June. Which feels weird, already talking about two thousand twenty-four, and it's right around the corner, isn't it?
It will be here, it's going to blink, Jim, it's going to be two thousand twenty-four.
So strange, so we do have those dates laid out, and if anyone has any issues or concerns, you can certainly let me, our Laura, you know.
February fifth, I have an issue.
February fifth, okay.
My issue, I won't be here.
Okay. So that, that is an issue, we will address that, okay. Usually we don't put anything on vacation week, right?
All right, with that, our next meeting will be Monday, November thirteenth, at the high school, starting at seven.
All right, thank you.
So I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.